...city council meeting on this 29th, February the 6th, 2023, approximately 7:07 PM. Mr. Derry, would you call real please?
Yes. Thank you, Brown.
Here.
Ms. McLeaver.
Here.
And Terry.
Here.
Roger Randmore.
Here.
Daniel McDaniel.
Here.
Ron Powell, Addison, we do have a call.
Thank you. If everyone would stand up please, we will be in our meeting this evening with my good friend Trent Hampton from Calvary Temple. I told him he's got 45 minutes to pray, so... And then followed by a pledge, please. Do you mind if I say something?
Well, I will go ahead and say, I apologize last time for making Daniel McDaniel pray.
Thank you.
I know it was awful.
Yeah. I didn't do that.
He had to do it, but he got a picture in the paper.
He did.
Because he prayed. I had never got that.
No.
Okay.
Okay, I'll pray.
Thank you.
Good Lord, we love you. Thank you for this gift of a great city culture. We thank you for all the blessings that you give us, God. We thank you for prosperity that you've given us time and time again. Lord, we acknowledge that you're the giver of all good things, and we ask you, Lord, that you would continue to put those things upon us. We thank you for allowing us to live in a community that takes time to still acknowledge you and seek you for direction and perfection and guidance. And we ask you tonight, God, that you would let your presence come here, that you would lead, guide, and direct as decisions are made. Give us Godly wisdom to give you glory. We ask that you protect our community, protect our leaders physically, spiritually, mentally, emotionally, God. Ask that you would keep us safe from harm, keep us safe from sickness. Give comfort and peace to those who have lost loved ones, Lord. Ask that you would unite us to do your good in the community, to show your love and to show your light. Ask that you would help us through those things so that you would get glory. God, we thank you in advance for continued blessings and prosperity through financial blessings and state championships that you put on our city, God. Ask that you would lead us, would guide us, direct us. Let your kingdom become green, which is just as it already is in heaven, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Will you see it? At this time, I would ask the councils for their approval for the January 3rd, 2023 resident council meeting, and also the January 30th special call city council meeting. I make that motion?
Second.
The motion is second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. McLeaver?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Randmore?
Yes.
And Terry?
Yes.
Thank you. We are now into recognitions and acknowledgements. I would ask Mr. Derry to join me down in front for a moment. So we have standards so they can see you on the podium. So every year, we attend, I have been attending Arkansas U.S. League along with several councils over the past several years, and Miss Derry has also done the same. And so they offer a lot of training and certification down there. So we're very proud and to announce tonight that Miss Derry has reached Level 1 certificate to Miss Derry for 21 years, 21 hours. Took her a long time. It's only 21 hours, but bless her heart, it took her 21 years to accomplish it. But it's a great accomplishment, and it's well worth the training down there.
Certified municipal official.
That's right. Sorry. Congratulations.
Thank you. Oh, thank you, Lord, for allowing me to be here and to train and to help as much knowledge as I can to protect this city in the capacity that I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We're anxious to get Roger down there and teach him everything that he lost 25 years ago. Okay. Want to make a couple of announcements. Miss Claire's not here tonight, but Claire Holland. If you don't know Miss Claire Holland, you need to get to know her. Don't ask her about her dad or anything, but Claire's a unique young lady, and I'm just having to, I'm not going to be able to find her. Sorry. Just a second. Claire needs to be congratulated. She received a second place at the state level in BFW Patriots Penn Scholarship Program. She had previously won first place at the post here in Greenwood at district levels, and she will, obviously will deserve it. I think she gets to go on to national time. Got to talk to her, but I think that's what's happening for her. So you see Claire out in public, let her know that you appreciate her and what she's doing. Beta Club has won a lot of things the past couple of weeks or whatever, so you have any information on this?
Well, I don't, but I know, it's my, the audience might know, they swept like five categories at state convention this year, which has never been done before. I think they've won the skip competition like 20 years in a row, or something. It's unbelievable. But this year, they won all the main categories, first place, just outstanding. The basic ones, skips and school.
Yep, that's cool. So we don't only raise athletes, we raise those smart folks too. And back in my day, they had a Beta Club, and I think you had to make As and Bs.
Yeah, still is.
I never got on Beta Club. But anyway, I think round the applause. Is she?
Yes.
Wow, okay.
She's going to win.
Is she? So when she retires, I think we're going to shut down the school for sure. That's true. She is that. Okay. Very good. We'll move on. Community reports. I think everything has been turned in for the most part, unless Fire Chief did have his in. I'd like to point out that he doesn't make a big deal about it. He's not here, so I guess it's used.
I don't think they have anything tomorrow.
Okay. Water wastewater, maybe not. So again, as always, if you don't see something that you need to know, let me know, or better yet, let Daniel know, and we'll get it to you. But there are some paper copies, and it's also on your tablet too, so. Citizen form. We have two gentlemen that have signed up tonight to speak. I'll just go down the list. Mr. Rounds, if you will, you're first. You have two minutes from now? I'm kidding. It's five. It's five.
The pastor gave me some of his time.
Did he? Well, I missed vocal ago. I said 45 minutes. He had 45 seconds. So if you would, for the record, state your name and address, please.
Yes, my name's Jim Rounds. I live at 3015 Old Chelsea Road in Greenwood, Arkansas. As you know, I do serve on the water wastewater commission, and I appreciate y'all for allowing me to serve and do that. It's not an easy job. It's a tough job. A lot to do with it. I know some of my eligibility has been called into question, and I just want to go over that to make sure that we're all on the same page. I had asked, you know, before I even came to serve, was that, you know, how do I qualify? Because I live outside the city limits. And I checked with several people. I made sure, and I was assured that I was eligible because I own a business here in town, and I have water for that business, much as Dr. Barton, who served on that water commission as well, had an office here in town as well. Just to let you know, I have two rented houses in town. I have two businesses in town. So I don't know if that qualifies anybody for anything, but I just, I have, I'm invested here in this community. And I wanted to bring that up because I want to get it out there. And on the other hand, the water equation, you know, I don't know what some people think about James Ford Rural Water, Coal Mine Water, Fort Smith Water, or what it is. I know that one thing, we need James Ford Rural Water Department right now, and we can't live without it per se. But we've had a chance to have Fort Smith Water per se back when it was going to be run from Highway 22 down to 96. There was $9 million available, and shovel ready, and ready to go, and ready to come. Some people may know more about this subject than I do, but I've researched it extensively. I know a lot about the story. I'm not saying I know everything about the story. I just want to bring these things up because we've had a chance to be on Fort Smith Water. From what I understand, we didn't want to be under Fort Smith, and that is the reason we're not, we don't have Fort Smith Water at this time. It would have been turned on in 2010, and we wouldn't be discussing this. Then we had a chance to have Coal Mine Water. Now, Dr. Pierce, Cornell, and I had talked together. I know him as a teacher, as a professor. He got his doctorate in hydrology. He is very well versed in water, and he said that this Coal Mine Water that we have is some of the cleanest water that he has ever sniffed. I know that there was also talk about machinery down the Coal Mine, where there was a dump in the, where the Coal Mine Water is. But that still, that water tested out to be some of the best water around, and a lot of it. You know, I bring all of this up because those are things that we turned down for one reason or the other. It was voted on, so I respect those votes. You know, I'm not questioning anybody's vote. I'm just saying, we've been there, we've done that, we've had opportunities, we've passed it up, we've come back to it. And really, you know, hey, if we want to hook on to Fort Smith Water and have James Ford Water and Greenwood Water, I'm all for it as a water commission member. But I get tired of going around in circles, talking about the same thing over and over again, and, you know, some people get mad, and some people get glad, but let's just, you know, let's just be honest. If there's a problem, let's fix it. Let's solve it. Let's try to figure out what the problem is and solve the problem. That's always good. And I don't mean that politically, mean, or what. I'm just, I want to get it out. And other thing, let's talk about it, and let's solve the problem. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for your service in the commission. Next on the list is Mr. Newcomb. Give us your name, sir, and address.
Mr. Newcomb, 129 Ridge Creek. I came here at 16:10, heard you wanted to talk.
Yeah, I'm always excited with you.
I just got one thing to ask. I'm pretty excited, I mean, people don't, they're going to follow, but I'm pretty excited about getting a fireman. You know, one fireman volunteering all day for 10 hours a day. It didn't get around much, but Chief and I had had a talk a long time ago, again and again. I used to tell him that when I had to, when it cut, that we needed two firearms on at the time. He said, oh, for one, that's good. Make it progress. One thing he taught us, and it really gets to me, and just been talking about, kicking around in buns, and I'm, you know, I'm going to hold my shoe up here sometimes. But the pay for the policeman doesn't equal the fire department. So what I'd like to ask, if we could consider freezing the fire department's pay until the policeman hit up with it, and then that column goes away. You know, it's going to mean, because right now, it's a convert of all people's trust. You know, I believe in being proactive, that reacting to something that's already happened in the one day, I believe, I believe in acting before we get a real problem. Maybe the council will want it, but that's, we put it under the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newcomb.
Mayor, can I discuss this?
Is there?
About that?
Is there?
I don't know what the latest is on that. From what I was told, the Fire Chief had requested to set that pay for that person at the starting pay of the police officer. Is that true?
Of the new hire, of the one, of the 10-hour?
Yeah.
Of the new position that he's referring to?
Oh, in other words?
Yeah, I think.
I think in other words, a person who would be at the fire station is not making the 25.75 an hour, they're not making more than the police officer. Per hour.
While they're not on the call.
Pardon?
While they're not on the call.
While, while they're at the station and not on the call, correct. Right.
If they're not on call.
Then it changes into that, that paper call.
Which I think answers your question, Mr. Newcomb. I don't know if does not, but, I mean, I don't think, there's not this huge disparity in what the person setting there will be paid and what patrol will be paid.
But see, forgive me for my age, because I didn't know that.
That was just recently discussed with, just before the budget was approved.
Yeah. Fast and fast.
Well, it's not very scary. I still want to get them saying, you printed that on.
You want to get them saying what, I'm sorry?
I would like to see that the firemen and the police officers pretty much make a saying, you know, that's a citizen asking you. They're not elected officials.
Well, I think also that when you look at the, the firemen are just paid, that, you know, they don't get the health insurance, they don't get, they get a small retirement, they don't get, you know, the regular, you know, full-time fire, you know, retirement like they would be and stuff. So, you know, if you kind of compare, you know, benefits and pay, you know, I mean, there might be, you know, I think that's what's really need to prepare.
Well, that's funny you should bring that up. That's something I forgot about.
Jim, would you mind coming back to the? All right. Thank you. That way we got you on the report. And you don't get to do five minutes, but I'll give you a couple.
I need five more minutes. That's funny you should bring that up, they see, because I checked into the benefits, we call them, and I thought there was benefits too. But our policemen, they're getting 42,000 a year, something like that. Close, I hope, Tom, on the close?
That's a target.
Okay. They were paying $350 every two weeks for their pension. It is not a benefit. That's $700 a month. You're, you're a smart man. I can give you like a number, that's $8,400 a year. So you say, we're going to give you 42s, but we're going to take $8,400 right off the top of it, just so you can take your kids to the doctor. That's not a benefit, and I kind of tired of hearing that, they see. It's not a benefit when somebody has to pay $700 a month and you call it a benefit. You missed my piece.
What about the retirement, Jim? What about the retirement?
Firemen got some kind of retirement. I don't care about retirement.
Well, I mean, it's all part of it, you know. I mean, the city pays for that retirement.
The firemen get something. I remember from being on council, but I can't remember the initial document. But, you know, unless you want to go out there, I know, I know, quick look, man. Unless you want to go out there, as firemen, they work, you know, eight-hour shifts or 12-hour shifts, like a policeman, do 12-hour shifts, I don't think you're entitled to any retirement. Because every one of you got full-time jobs, and you're volunteers. Because that's, that's the big, that's the big elephant in the room here. You're volunteers, you've got a full-time job, you've got that and that. But I have great respect for the firemen. In fact, this week, I found a documentary on Netflix about what it takes to be certified as a fireman. And I promise you, if I had to take that stupid dummy that weighs 180 pounds on my back and go up three stairs, three flights of stairs, on the second flight, you'd have to come and get me, because I might have a heart attack. But I would really appreciate what you do, and I would recommend it. Anybody, if you want to see truly what it takes to be certified, to watch that. But still, there's part-time job. You know, we can't compare apples and oranges, there's still a part-time job.
But Jim, I think that's, I think that's important to talk about. I mean, if you're comparing apples and apples, you know, a patrol officer, say, starts at the fire, that's police department, or whatever, the alley, or whatever it is, versus, you know, it's been discussed, there's a, a police officer makes X per hour, a fireman makes 25.75 an hour. Okay, that's, that's true on that call. When he's on a fire call, he gets paid 25.75 an hour for maybe an hour. You know, he's not got a 40-hour a week job at 25.75 an hour. You know, so it's not truly, now, if you want to talk about the person working, however many hours it is a week at the fire station, maybe that's a different conversation, but I just, and nobody's, nobody's railing against steward and fire department for the many of the years, you know, but I just don't think it's fair comparison.
Okay, I'll give you that one. One thing I think we better look at, you know, we've got an addition out there, you know, 250 houses, what, going in the next five years, buddy? Next five years, 250 houses, that's right? Okay, there's another addition on 96 to think about. I still think we need to blend the fire department. I don't know how it's going to work, but we've got to have something. I think we need to come to some kind of an agreement to get both of them growing, because as we grow, we're also going to be more police officers.
I agree. I, you know, and I think we've talked about this several times, and I mean, it's a different conversation probably, but, you know, the best deal going is that you can keep the volunteer pay per call arrangement. I mean, that's the best thing for the republic. I mean, that's the.
It is.
And you go start talking about hiring full-time firemen and paying them retirement and benefits, and I mean, that's a big deal. So, you know, recruiting and growing that department is the way we have. I mean, we've got a great deal.
Well, I think it's pretty smart the way we're doing it, you know, starting out with one person for 10 hours a day. I think that can go far quicker than we do. That's just my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is, oh, before I do that, let me, let me do a thank you real quick at the citizen forum instead of waiting till everybody's gone. I want to do a thank you to all departments during this last two weeks, or however long it's been, it seems like two months that we've been iced in and snowbened. So I want to thank everybody for doing their part, and in particular, last week, or last month, I think I mentioned, or maybe at the special call meeting, I mentioned the water sewer guys, and they continue to do that. And now the girls in the water office are trying to figure out what to do about that, you know, no, no shut offs, no late fees and all that. So kudos to the ladies, or as I recently learned, it's kadoos. Listen to a guy in Fort Smith, he's from Chicago, and he said kadoos. I'm like, I don't know what that is. But anyway, kudos to the ladies, but also, in particular, this week, last two weeks, was the street department who did an outstanding job of going out and making sure that we were safe in the city. And to clarify, and a couple of things on Facebook, I don't, I look at Facebook, but I don't answer it, so I can get real, real quick. So, but due, due to clarify, or I want to clarify something. TENS for, as you have been known, has been known on Center Street, everything that is overlay now does belong to the city. That is ours. It's been turned over to us. So Jeff and I talked about that during the snow days, and he wasn't absolutely for sure. I don't have to be specific to tell me that, but I have verbal from R-DOT. So that's ours. We will now, and they already did some, I think this time, but they didn't know until we talked, we'll maintain that like we do our streets. But again, as you know, it adds more responsibility to us. But in case somebody asks, that is ours. Everything is paid. So in other words, from.
Basically from South Hope Road to Southern.
Exactly. So that's ours, and as, we got that done early. I don't know if you remember, but that was an early kind of Christmas present, because that was horrific out there on what I call food court alley. So that's done. And then as, as they build the new bypass slash traffic relief, we will inherit the rest of it going out that east of town. So, but until then, that's still state highway. And also, we will be working with R-DOT and street guys and the police department, the heavy truck, tractor, trailer traffic, I don't want to say that five times, is, that is now supposed to turn there in front of the senior citizen center, go across the bridge and go out and hit 10. And that's, that is the truck route. It always has been the truck route, but we definitely want it and want to enforce that because we want as little of that traffic on our new, new highways we can now. There will always be a semi-trailer on it because they have local delivery to that and, and things like that. So I just want to clarify that in case you see something or somebody asks you, that's what's ours and what's not ours from how we're going to handle it. So again, thank you, street department, senior guys and gals for doing that. So we'll move on to financial report. Mr. Marshall?
Just real quickly, your numbers are going to be, it's going to be a horrible report primarily because the budget was just approved. Budget numbers have not been loaded into the Center Point system at this point. We're in the process of doing the salary adjustments and getting those into this payroll. Those will start being input this week, so in your next financial report, you will have budget numbers to look at. Right now, your reports are absent of the budget column, and all you see is actual numbers. I will just give you some highlights on your statistics for your sales taxes. City sales and use tax, we budgeted four and a half percent. The same period growth of January over 22th of January was 8.3%. You will notice that that is dropping from, we ended with 9.7, but usually January is your month that is a little bit lower, primarily because it represents November's collections. And we get it in January, that's Thanksgiving, and that's everybody eating at home, and that's everybody coming into town, and people do have to buy their groceries, but unfortunately, that is a month that you don't see a lot of, a lot of activity from other purchases. You will see, February jumped up a lot. Usually that's because it's the end of November, beginning of December's sales, which is the Christmas shopping season. County sales tax, 8.5% is what we budgeted. We had same period growth of 9.8%. We're up 1.3%. So county is a little closer than, to what our conservative estimate was. We ended the year last year at 14.6%, so to start the year at 9.8 shows that significant drop off. Advertising and promotion, we budgeted 6%. We experienced a 3.112% growth. A lot of the reason for that is the fact that the fast food were impacted by people eating at home and your Thanksgiving time. Your cash flow, 520,000 increase in cash for the month. Net increase, same, obviously, because it's only one month statistic. Current fund balance at the end of January was 17,320, which is a 3.1% growth. Net income, we had revenue of 1.2 billion. Total expense was 705,000. The reason for that is the budget was not approved, and we were on a extended budget of just operating expenses. Capital expenditures, as you look down at the bottom, you'll see did not occur mostly that easily $12,000 of the carryover from the previous month that got paid in January. We do have a budget of $7,708,000, which is our capital budget. It does include a little over $2 million in carryovers from the previously approved in last year. So that's the reason why you don't see any activity there, because they outweighed the budget that was approved before they could start going on the project. So you should start seeing those numbers change in the future upcoming months. And with that, that's pretty much all I have. We don't have your graphs yet because one dot on a piece of paper doesn't represent it.
Just, I'm not, I've seen it on my tablet. I don't want anybody else, if I can't find it on my tablet, I don't know. Charlotte?
The report?
Yeah, well, the, the whole, you know, usually she has the city.
Do you want me to try and locate for them?
Yeah.
It's not all of the rest of the region, so.
I hope she gets level two.
It's not on their tablets, but I sent it to the one who knows.
Yeah, I got it.
For some reason, I don't mean it often.
Did you hear it this afternoon, or? I thought I checked. It's okay, though. All right. You either look at it, Mr. Brown, or, or any question regarding it?
No.
Okay. Okay, thank you, sir. Moving on on the agenda, number one on the old unfinished business is Councilman Daniel McDaniel, we do ordinance, that's ordinance, number 02-19, setting value on it. So, Mr. McDaniel?
Well, we titled that with Mr. Plumber was going to go and look into that and come back.
Like you've got something to name over here?
Uh, yes, I looked at ordinance number 02-19, and it did reference the incorrect code section. As Mr. McDaniel pointed out, that code section was repealed in 2017 or replaced by the existing one, 1454302. And the mayor is authorized to sell or exchange any municipal personal property with a value of $20,000 or less, so up to $20,000. So anywhere from where it's at now, 500 to 20,000 would be okay.
5,000?
500, I think, or.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. They all were. Okay.
Well, up to 20,000.
Well, if we, if we keep this ordinance in place, it'll stay at 500, though, right? I mean, the code, the state code says you, it's 20,000 unless there's a, a ordinance stating otherwise, which is why they say 500. So we need to. We say 500. So, we need to, we need to either fix this ordinance to reference the right state statute, which I guess would be the minimum. But, I mean, my thought, in my, my opinion, at the last meeting was we repealed this ordinance and this couple state statutes. Because what, you know, again, what brought this conversation up was during budget discussions. One, I think the chief was talking at one point maybe about selling his truck or somebody was going to sell a truck or something like, but then the other deal was the animal control selling the dog box, you know? And not having, you know, just, in my opinion, we get it very far to go, go take care of business. No point in coordinating everything back here by the fence waiting on auction or whatever. I mean, I don't want the dog box to work. Obviously, trucks work for $100.
Well, I guess while we're at, on section two, it says that we can easily wait. I mean, if the mayor says, you know, I'd like to sell the dog box, you know, I have somebody interested in it, you know, for, you know, 800 bucks or whatever I say, you know?
Yeah, I think we've done that. I mean, we've done that.
We've done that.
If you're looking for a quicker remedy to things, that what your, your plan is?
Yeah, well, just, I mean, the discussion came up and, you know, can we go sell this dog box? Well, I don't think so because I think we got an ordinance that says some number. So, we went and looked for the ordinance and found that it says 500. And then it's referencing the wrong state code. So, you know, that brought up a question. Do we just get rid of the ordinance and go with state statute? Or do we revise the ordinance? I said last month, I haven't really had a strong opinion one way or the other. I mean, my, my instinct is just repeal the ordinance and go with state statute. You won't have another ordinance out there from these days with the wrong code line again, you know? If they change it again.
I don't, for myself in this position, I don't, I don't feel encumbered by, by any means. I mean, there's no... I've not felt the need to sell something quickly, whether it be a dog box or whatever. I mean, I appreciate what you're saying.
I think, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I don't think it gives you an ability to do anything quicker necessarily. I guess it might, because state statute says that that needs to be recorded or, you know, tracked and counted. So, you know, I mean, it's not that we're giving Doug the authority to go sell something in the morning. I don't think there's a rush.
Okay, well, whatever, whatever.
However, y'all want to do it, I'm fine.
You want to pursue it or you want to leave it as it is?
If we leave it as it is, I'd like to raise it because I could, you sell curbs today, $500 would go a lot. I'd, I'd kind of just initially like to fix the, where it refers to state statute, correct that, and raise the limit to 2500 dollars. At least that would get rid of all the garbage. Not that any ain't worth $1,000 garbage, but we kind of collect that stuff.
Is that a motion?
Oh, it's part of a discussion, but I'm making a motion, yes.
Y'all would want, you want us to just bring the, correct the document next meeting?
Thank you.
How about that?
And that, and that's for...
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we're any rush to do this tonight.
I'm like, add a motion.
Thank you.
Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray Warren?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
That's unanimous. And it would be a little over 2500 dollars in corrected state statute.
Mr. McDaniel said he wouldn't mind being 5,000.
I...
And I guess one makes sure the correct state statute is 14-54-302.
That's correct.
That would be the correct state statute.
Yes, sir.
Could maybe, since I was talking about 2500 and Mr. McDaniel was talking about 5,000, could we just leave it maybe for the writing next time? Next time?
I mean, that's a 20 something-year-old ordinance we're talking about. So, $500 goes further down the road back then.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Number two, oh, did I mention there's no agenda issues?
Nope.
Number two is made, resolution, many resolution number 121-24 adopting official salary range schedule. I'll let Mr. Marsh opine on that a little bit. We discussed it. Daniel? Oh, sorry. Okay.
I've attached the...
He defers to you, sir. You got the new one in there? Or what's, is that the new one?
Yeah, the, it's paper flipped and the back, the second version is our current, just so you can compare the two.
This is number two, one, right?
Uh-huh. And then the one in front is the one you're, you're probably on, and the one in back, we're not doing it. Yep. The one in front is the one you're gonna be voting on in the current version is at 100.
So, we need to look, sure, I know the parks department, the numbers are not correct. I've got...
What's in your budget is correct.
Okay.
The numbers in the budget are right, but what's in this register is not right. February 21, which would have been, 21 is the number, 21 salary, right? I'm talking about parks. I'm looking at the director in particular just because it's a number. 58, 296, 12 is the minus. Then you have December is 21, which would have been 2022 salaries. We've got the same number for the parks department. There should have been a 5.9 COLA applied to that number. So, this one that we have here in front of us tonight is adding the 8.7 to the... We're, we're a 5.9 COLA behind last year.
You're, you're worse. Your salary ranges, the one that precluded the COLA discussions was your 116-21. And the 116-21 was done in 2016. The parks director's max salary was 57,548. The one that was done December of 2020 refers to the COLA. All other departments increased by 1.3, which was the COLA at that time. That was the national COLA. He gave it to them, 1.3 percent. Parks did not change. Parks stayed at 57,548. So, right there, you're 1.3 behind.
In that, in the fact the...
That was your 120-29.
Is that because of, for some reason, the finances of the city got taken out of the city council commission's hand?
I have no idea why. Water, wastewater did change. The only one that didn't was parks. I don't know what the rationale was. Waiting for it.
We've talked about that number of times that we, we should still be the ones setting the pay scale.
Yeah. And I think the way a commission could address that is the commission could decide to just say we will follow the city's established pay scales.
And I've got that section in this here.
Thank you.
That's what I've got in section two and three here on the ones.
Because it was recommended in one of these, it was recommended, or is that the resolution that it recommended?
Wait, I've got two. Can you show me what's going on here?
The one in your right hand is current, the one your left?
Your other right.
And the new one has section two and three on the fourth page?
We had this, we had this resolution, buck 1705, from February of 2017 that brought a, told God or another. It was revised into section four, and it says that all salaries in conversation with reg regulated each calendar year by the budgeted city, that's per by the bill of the council, with exception of the city agreement with water and wastewater commission and parks commission, who by law are self-governing over their own employees. It's requested that commission adhere to these established parameters in setting salaries. You know, I completely agree with Tom. I think all of these salaries need to be in one place, this document. We don't need to have everybody having their own matrix. But I would like for the parks commission and the water commission to vote on their record that says we defer to the city's matrix, you know, for salary ranges, just so that's all, so we can make this go away, this 117, 121.
That I've got in here. That's in here, this new, the section in the salary data.
We gave, you know, that's a little bit, you've got an ordinance that says the water and sewer commission have full complete authority to operate, right? Well, full complete authorities, full complete authority to manage their people as well and set those salaries. But, you know, for the sake of continuity and all of that, I'd like for, you know, those master documents couldn't be housed. We recognize it's there, you know?
And I don't know, Ms. Burchett is here tonight. I don't know if she wants to address it now or not. Obviously, it's a commission.
Since I've been on the commission, we have all the returns and your schedule.
And you got it.
I understand the parks, it's...
Now, I thought I already have.
Neither, neither commission is varied from what the council says.
And in their meetings, they acknowledge, yes.
So, we're doing what you're suggesting, or they're doing what you're suggesting already. It might not be bad to have more, as we say around here in the Pacific.
I believe they've already adopted it.
And I think that's what Charles got here in section two and three.
And it's in this document, but they've already accepted it. Not this very document you're looking at.
Right.
They've already established, I'm looking at it.
Look on this, section three. Instead of saying with the exception of the water and wastewater parks, should we say including water and wastewater parks? So that we're, you know what I'm saying? Let's clarify section three so that five years from now, somebody's not saying, y'all weren't supposed to do that. They were.
What are you asking?
Well, it, section three sort of implies that, implies it says it, with the exception of the water and wastewater commission and the parks commission, you know, I would say including the water and parks commissions.
And you wanted to put that in the last sentence, section three?
We're going to maintain these salaries on their behalf.
And you've made a request of these already. So, I think...
Yeah.
The document, the document you have, as it reads, in my opinion, is, is exactly, is, they have the authority, but you as a council are requesting that they do it, not telling them they have to. That's the difference. And they could if they wanted to, even at your request, or they could refuse to, I guess.
So, you're politely asking this?
Yeah, politely asking, and they have always. I've been.
They always have.
So, it's easier.
Well, if they decide not to politely adhere, what happens?
They do what they want.
They're on their own.
They got their own matrix and different than our matrix?
Right. That's, that's a possibility the way it reads. I mean, right.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to avoid.
We just don't fund enough money.
That's a thing.
Yeah, I mean, we still have power of the parks.
They usually have a monkey about there for this. Because they're not even just as often.
I mean, if you guys still think it's okay, then I'm not...
You guys still have to live our budget.
Yeah.
That's, yeah. That's what they said.
But back to Tom.
But the problem is that the matrix that you have right now is not representative of parks with the 1.3, the 5.9, and the 8.7. What you see on the budget for the max salary for the director of parks should be 67,107 using the 116-21 and rolling those COLAs through. For two years, they did not. Their numbers stayed the same as was reflected at 116.49. So, they're only benefiting from one of those COLAs and not all of them. So, that needs to be trued up if you want to make it match everything. That's the only thing I would make sure of.
So, can you do those, can you do those three right now and true it up? You said 67?
I can tell you the number immediately. It's in the budget.
Are we sure that's the only three?
That's the only ones. I went through everyone matching what I have on my list, and that parks was the only one that was not right.
And this is just what the mayor's made max salary of, or not in any new of they owe the current...
And even if we used what's on the, the resolution that they're asking to approve at this meeting without the correction, they won't be over the max. They won't be over that max right now.
I just don't know why they didn't, we didn't know, I mean, if there was a reason, we'll walk back there and ask. You know, and say, if there was...
It should have been.
Should have been.
I don't know if there was a reason or not either. I mean, I can't remember.
I think it must have been oversight. I think it's just oversight and Joe's not here.
A lot of numbers are up there.
Yeah, I think it was just a, as my grandson says, it was a glitch.
In the matrix.
In the matrix. That's exactly right. And he's six.
So, if you wanted to adopt it and you liked it, so...
So, what, what were the...
Mass for the director is 67,107. The maintenance two is 40,814. And the maintenance one is 37,034.
034?
Correct.
What about the minimums on there?
Yeah.
I don't have the minimums on here. I only, I'm a judge. I don't do the max. I'll go back and recap like the minimums. I will, I'm...
And that's got all the COLAs out of the, in the column?
Yes. The budget automatically, once I pop in the COLA, automatically moves to max.
One thing, well, I think that, yeah, we need to adopt resolution with the corrections that you had. But although I just want to ask, on the water and wastewater, I thought you were going to keep those the same. But I just noticed that there was not a equipment operator. Is that not...
For the wastewater plant?
Yeah.
That would definitely need an operator.
Okay, all right. Just want to make sure. Thank you, Tom. I think most of we adopted the resolution with the corrections to the parks missing.
Let me, let me ask one question, sir.
Okay.
We had talked about, is this going to be a deal we're going to have to go redo it every year? I know we debated on this for a while, but, but I thought we wanted to make something where it was automatically going to go with the federal COLA.
That was Daniels' proposal, yes.
Yeah.
But that's not what she did.
I, I kind of softened on that opinion a little bit on that, by the way. After doing this, I do, I would like for this to be a policy, I guess, that clearly defines where this is coming from, where this, you know, the 8.7 COLA found that, 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 you know, will be applied each calendar year as a minimum and maximum salary measure. But I think this matrix needs to come back to us as a resolution and we need to vote. Because that puts it on public record, you know, and then we can all go dig back all the way through all the agency, all the matrix.
That's a good thing that we twisted that.
Yeah. I mean, if you, if you weren't voting on this, it wasn't a matter of record, then the parks director that makes a complaint, it would have gotten us out. I mean, so I think for, you know, but...
I agree.
How you make that policy, I don't exactly know unless you want to write another resolution that says this is...
Well, I think it's kind of right there in the top there, you know, that it's, you know, coincides with the full security income adjustment, cost of living increase, you know, so I think we look at it.
So, then make sure when you change, it'll tune up the percentage of the year.
Yeah.
And then the, and then the matrix, yeah.
Every year it'll come to you kind of like procedural resolution, procedural rules every year. No big deal.
There was a, there was a conversation, uh, during budget time, this 8.7 is the national, uh, cola. You know, and then there's a regional number. I like Tom's philosophy of this, we apply the national cola to the matrix, which gives you a little bit of delta in the salary, uh, ranges, so in, in this year it was.
3.7 is 6.74.
6.74, so you actually bumped, you bumped everybody, you know, their measures two percent over. You know, so you give them a little bit of bandwidth there to play with over time, so. I think we leave it national, or, uh.
So.
But, Kim, this is one time, I mean, we could do that so that every year at budget time, we don't have that same, we seem to regurgitate the same conversation every year about what is it, why is it, is that what we're gonna do? See, if we want to put the thing to bed, we can pass a resolution, and so this is how we're gonna do it. Move on, and, you know, we don't have to rehave that conversation.
You're talking about kind of making, doing away with having to have half of it, is that right? Some, one, one, you're agreeing to put the, to put the national cola on there to change this matrix every year. You still have to get it from the end to ride and to get less than that.
Right.
So you're still having that conversation, so.
Yeah, this is just the matrix, I mean, how low the matrix adjusts, this is how the matrix.
Right, so that part of the conversation.
Yeah, the conversation of what is the matrix and how will the matrix work is this, so. What are we gonna pay the specific people, that's another conversation.
Also, what is asked about it is, when you raise it about the national cola, you, you, and then you, you give less in the adopted budget, there's, not everybody can say max then, and I will write here for, I give merit rate or something, whereas, or it's never been a merit rate.
So on this, I'll give you an example of that, I won't tell you who it's telling to me, but it was kind of cute. He says to me, after he sees and he signs his, or did I say he, a person signs his, his change today, and he said, oh, matrix went up, so, now if I'm a good boy between next year, the mayor does have an opportunity to figure this, because he, Chuck, I'll let you figure out who that was. But it does give you that opportunity.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Ray Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
And.
Thank you. Uh, moving on, uh, number three, renewal of service contracts for SRCA, SSSTVGC, Sebastian County Library, and Chamber of Commerce. You have a copy of all of those. It's my knowledge, you know, is correct, none of these have changed. Right? They're all, they're all the same. Yeah, we didn't announce requirements or, or contract services, everything's the same.
Are we still on the old building with SRCA?
We are, now this is not a contract, yeah, yeah, this is not your lease, this is with SRCA. But yes, we are.
Well, there's still money involved there that kind of reflects.
Services and utilities.
Right, right.
Because they have to bear those costs.
Yeah. And we have, I have, as, as council's comfortable, that I certainly am very comfortable with, that I have a gentleman's agreement with Farmer Bank, as, as to, we are, and, and Farmer Bank is fine too, if we want to write a contract for a month or two months or three months of whatever it takes, till we get out of there and move to the new building, but as far as they are concerned, they're good, letting it ride. We are obligated, as you know, to go back over there and kind of do some repairs to leave the building in good condition, I think is what I said. So, but I don't know, if, if you generally have to, wanna do that differently, I am absolutely comfortable with it. And they are too, so. Well, I'm thinking, even in the new building, you're still gonna have utilities and some docked maintenance or whatever.
That's budget, they're cooperating.
Yeah, right, so, I mean, still did be.
They need to that, yes. They wouldn't need for any of it. They're only getting reimbursed for what they spend, so when the new, the new building, there would be no building done, so.
Yeah, that'd be, yeah.
Move point to the contract.
I see. You are, so, uh, we will, yes, yeah.
How's A and Sledco?
They are AEB, I believe. AEB?
I'm sorry.
Huh?
The new one? It's Sledco.
Oh, they are.
Yeah.
Well, I have 50% chance that I'm, I'm in Sledco. I make motion that we need to rethink what I found, or I have.
If you're okay, and everybody's okay with all of them, you can do one note for the, all of theirs presented here.
Which else would?
And you might want to say all of their names, though. Even reason, I don't know.
Well, one year, this is a year to year deal, right?
Yeah, uh, yes. I make a motion that we renew the service contracts for SRCA, SSC, PTC, Sebastian County Library, and Chamber of Commerce.
This one second.
Say, I think it's the upper.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Ray Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
And.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, number four is an ordinance declaring moratorium on the building of storage buildings, I think. Uh, we had a discussion about this today, Mr. Bella's here. Daniel, you're kind of championing this, are you not?
Sure.
Okay, you wanna give us your, and I'll call Mr. Bella. I want you to get some thoughts.
Well, I don't have anything different than an opinion, just like everybody else, except up here, I don't think that, um, you know, the landscape's being saturated in storage buildings all over, it's not a greenwood property, it's all over the place. Uh, Fort Smith, uh, recently issued a moratorium in Fort Smith while they review their, uh, processes and plans and all those things. Um, and I, you know, I'd just like to see us do the same and come up with some.
Are you familiar with our processes that we have now?
Well, just, I, I, I think specifically what I would be concerned with is the, uh, you know, zoning, I guess. I mean, I think the one that, I think the one that kind of stains everybody probably, well, maybe two, is, you know, we got, we went out and spent this money down Center Street, you know, we want to see this developed for retail, and then it's getting gobbled up for storage buildings, which is not helpful to our economic retail corridor at all.
Would you have the same objection if it was a doctor's office? Our church?
Not really, no.
The same land, but they, uh, those type of businesses do not bring in tax revenue to the city.
Then yes, I'd have the same objection.
Do what?
Then I would have the same objection, yes.
I think one of the, I, I think one of my objections, Sonny, is, you know, obvi- the obvious, uh, the, the, you know, tax implications of it, uh, however, I mean, uh, I think we were looking at that recently, um, you know, I think storage buildings are supposed to be collecting tax.
I don't know, I, Charlotte and I looked at this some, some time ago, and, and we, I think she called the state, and they said, no, that is a short term rental. If, if you could find me something on there, I would love it.
Tom, weren't you, you and I looked at that? In the tax, sales tax?
You and I looked at it a little bit, and it, it was about as confusing as it was helpful.
Sales tax?
Yeah.
It has to be a, like a boat or a vehicle that's undercover, that's enclosed, it can't be outside. But they, my part is, I think it's a RV or a boat or whatever, they charge me sales tax.
But I think the other thing, you know, you know, uh.
Don't get me wrong, that's like the.
It's property values, I mean, I don't think, going into building this storage facility is not doing anything for the property values of the neighbors, unlike a doctor's office, I mean, I think that would probably improve your property value. I mean, who knows the answer to that, that's all speculation.
When somebody comes to me and they own the property, then we have to look at, at what we have in our toolbox to regulate it. And in our zoning, C2, uh, does not allow, uh, storage rooms, so they have to have a variance in being up at it. When that was built, that was on a state highway, it's not a state highway anymore, that changed. Uh, if it had been Center Street instead of Tinsper, it would not have been approved.
So we gave them a variance request to build the 107?
Yes. Uh, then it falls underneath our commercial guideline, where it has to meet certain criteria, uh, during, for destruction, uh, that makes it, uh, the appearance better than just what you see some of the older, uh, storage rooms that we have around town, you know, kind of breaking laws, and, uh, sign hangings on the end of it, well, like the one over here by the post office.
You know, as storage buildings go, I mean, I'm not trying to dog these guys, the one they're building on Center Street, the one that, uh, that John Paul built out there, I think, nice, but nice for them, but, but, I mean, do we need?
It's, it's a, well, you know, uh, if I use a storage room, and I'm the mayor, probably, probably rent a storage room right now. Everything is full, so as a business, it's an excellent investment for somebody. That's why, that's why you see them being, being built on Nazard and the, the huge one there on Zero Street, but I know the, what that property sold for, because I worked for a company trying to buy the property at the same time, the storage people bought it at several million dollars and built the storage, so. I mean, they are a good investment for somebody, and, uh, I think that we have the tools in place to regulate them. Uh, I was telling the mayor this morning that, that we have a, a person that's looking, that has said that he wants to build a storage facility on the corner of Jones and, and Denver Street. It ain't happening. That's, that's a residential, that's, that is a transitional area to a residential, and it's on a city street. It ain't gonna happen. Uh, I mean, I'm sorry to be owning the property and all that, but we're not gonna put a storage room in the middle of town next to a residential area. And so those kind of things are in place as we have right now. That's what Fort Smith is trying to do, is to make sure that they're in a proper zone, and then they have the ability to regulate some of what the commercials appearance of it. But as you know, and I, and like I told you before, uh, we are, we've been hit by these state regulations that says that we are limited on what we can tell people that they can build at their facilities. We need, you know, we need specified, uh, 100% brick, we need specified different things like that, we can suggest.
Right now, our zoning is C2?
That's all C2. And C2 lists all the things that you can put in C2, and storage facilities are not one. And so that.
Where do they go?
Where do they go?
They don't go as, where does the storage build have to go, what zone?
Storage room with, uh, industrial. It's like, pardon, it's industrial, C3, it's high, high on one, yeah. It's like the, the ones up there by Mike's, Calister's.
We don't have any industrial zone property left anymore, right?
Uh, that, and, uh, one out of that, you.
That's owned industrial?
Yeah.
Bill, we were out front there.
Well, remember, he came, he came in front of the council, and I thought that, but he came in front of the council, and it was approved to remain as a, uh, industrial.
As for sale too.
So did the land, were the current anytime fitness, AT&amp;T store, Dollar Tree, climate controlled stores, Tractor Supply, that's been C2 the whole time, regardless of whether it's Tinsper or Center Street or. And so y'all granted them a variance to put in storage buildings?
Yeah.
Why?
Because it was on a state highway.
Why is that, why is that?
It's just, it's, that's what, this, the C2 is supposed to be for motoring public and businesses that relate to that. Uh, and so the, like I said, the gentleman on the property, uh, he came in with a, a flat that, uh, was, you know, very well engineered.
So if somebody wants to buy half of Jacob Burton's lot, property at the curb, are we gonna give them and build a storage unit, we gonna let them do that?
Absolutely not.
On a state highway?
Not the way, you got it on 71 side or on, on the Tinsper.
More.
Well, that would be up to, to Jacob Burton, and then they would have to come to, uh, the planning commission, and the planning commission would look at the total project and probably turn it down. I can't speak for them, but I'm sure that they, they would look at the, uh, the retail and the, uh, library and everything else that is planned with curb.
Yeah, residential one there too, that's, Mr. Burton.
Yeah.
What about, uh, Mike Callister's own place, that's been reasoned?
That's not the city.
You want to move out of it? That's not the city one.
No, that, the fact that they did, where we got these major pipes, and we got such an investment, that investment's probably 10,000 a foot. To take that up to storage buildings, that just, that would come.
Again, right, like I said, consideration.
If it had been, uh, a doctor's office, or an insurance office, or, or a small church, we would have the same, you would have the same argument.
At least they'd buy water and sewer from you.
Well, they've got water, uh, caps, I don't know that they have a sewer cap, under there.
They have a sewer cap.
They have a sewer cap.
It was about to.
And they paid the, they paid the premium price for the sewer and water sewer from you. So they paid for that, that portion that we, we taxed, you know, for the, uh, for the, the, uh, water and sewer cap there. We don't get sales tax on the doctor's office? No. Its exemption must take long. I never paid attention, services still have, you, you still have to pay sales tax on services? Yeah, uh, uh, if you go to the alcohol industry, you don't pay, so you say, you buy glasses there, I would imagine you would. But, uh, in church, have these, uh, uh, churches, you know, we got five churches down, uh, Center Street, that, uh, they're not, they're non-pacable business, use very little water, look through.
I mean, I'd rather have a church than a storage.
I, I agree with you with all of you, I don't like storage revenue either.
I, I think what the, the, if I may, the, we can all agree, we don't thrill that, but what we need to know is, if we talk about this biggest warning, lay on our city attorney, and maybe not at this moment, given time, is what do we, what do we have in that toolbox to prevent, or to designate where they can go? I think, I think, one little, I know, you gotta be careful when you're telling people what they can't build on their land.
Well, it's, it's like. Mr. Handy was there, and he brought up, you know, and we passed an ordinance that won't allow anything on Center Street that doesn't pay state city tax. And I said, do you want to take that lawsuit, you know, that to court, and he said, absolutely not. You know, that's, that's the scary part, and.
I mean, I think that'd be nice, it'd be great, obviously, if, you know, somebody lived in there and you got to suddenly fall in love, you like, you know, another Mexican restaurant or something. And that, to me, it's just the aesthetics of driving into Greenwood, and it's like, we had the planning tools in place to prevent it from happening, and we did.
Well, I think the reason we put the water and sewer mine in there was to get tax generating businesses to build there. I think there was just a breakdown somewhere between planning. I think there was just a breakdown somewhere between planning and whoever, the variance that they were giving.
Well, I think if somebody said, I'm gonna build a church there, I don't think anybody, you know, nobody.
Again, if we knew that we were trying to get tax-generated businesses in there, yes, we would send an old, old church. An old, old doctor's office if they don't get sales tax. I'd like to know for sure on some of these businesses that he's talking about. I don't have any idea.
Well, Sonny, but you said that, again, it's, it's under the code I industrial, where it's 40 buildings covered.
Also, where it would go without having a variance, basically.
Yes, so, but if you have a variance, I, I guess, like I said, we need to be more aware because that variance still is, is brought to us, right? After the planning commission approves the variance, it's still brought to us.
We need to draw that, so that it's not.
Well, that, see, a variance is done by the, the Board of Adjustment, Board of Adjustment, Quasajudicial Board. So it means that if, if they rule on something and, say, the property owner disagrees with them, they wouldn't come to the council, they would have to go to court. And it takes the council, takes the pressure off the council of making those decisions.
We still get the lawsuits, just like whenever Niles tried to put his in over here and y'all say he can't. That's why I tell him, bud, get ready on your briefcase dusting off.
You know, floods, I only got, like, these other.
And that's, it's gonna happen. I mean, that was, it is what it is.
Yeah.
Sonny, but we don't, we don't have any planning jurisdiction anymore, is that right? We got one lot. So how is McAllister's old machine shop not in that one lot?
It's in a planning jurisdiction, but planning jurisdiction is mainly for subdivision, for development.
Yeah, for development. And that's not a development, it's not a development, it doesn't have business.
Well, we read the action, you could enforce ordinance. I think they read the action, you could enforce ordinance.
Yeah, you can. I think you just said it's not a, it's not a, what did you just say?
What did it say? It has to be a supplement.
The, the thing about it is, you know, once it happened, it, when it happened, when the water situation is settled for that part of town, and then that's when we're going to look at annexing all that, which would include that property, which would include the, the portion where it touches Shadow Lake, where then we can look at Shadow Lake. You know, right now, we have talked about annexing Shadow Lake in the past. Shadow Lake should come into the city. This is going on, 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 but it can't, it's not contiguous to the, to the city. Once we make that sense of my property and rock side and all that, they are.
Daniel, you have an ordinance, man? When are we voting on an ordinance?
I don't have one. I mean, I don't know, you know.
I mean, I.
It sounds to me like we have in place what we needed to be in place, but I would say I have no confidence to your Board of Adjustments or whoever it is that went out there and said, we'll wait, we're changing the, the zone.
Yeah, I, I have.
I mean, we haven't.
I have no issue with the moratorium on it, like I said, I, I don't like meetings.
I mean, if I don't enforce what's there, I don't see an hope for a moratorium to write something new.
Now that I, that Tinsper is not there anymore, that's, that's Center Street, I think that it's off the table. How about HDM, the one that, that you're talking about on.
Oh, the new storage buildings.
That might happen again, and we'll have to face that if, if it comes to that, and we will.
Well, I know we have, like, commercial guidelines, you know, I know there's any kind of commercial guidelines as far as aesthetics of, you know, what faces the street, you know.
Landscaping and things like that are coming to play. You know, it's still under construction.
I think we spent $300,000 getting the water through there, and then another about $300,000 getting the sewer. Does that sound right?
Maybe a little high or something, yeah.
So I think we had invested between $150,000 and $200,000 in front of that property. And so I'm like Daniel, I kinda have no confidence in this Board of Adjustments when they just kind of willy-nilly give away our investment.
Well, it's any ordinance that we set up. We have no control over what this, whoever these folks are that grant the variance. They can change any city law that we have on the book and say, well, yeah, okay, we're gonna let you slide on this one. And we have no idea that that's going on.
No, that is a pretty good stretch for us to.
But I swear, we used to have an idea of it before.
Variances are, are not, you can't change any city ordinance with a variance. It is specifically designed for development and zoning and subdivision regulation.
Any city ordinance we have on zoning, subdivision regulation, or development, they can change and move out of there. I'll rephrase that completely. Yeah, I mean, well, just another, just another commission thing that happens, which is fine. But if this is a horrible judgment right here out of this Board of Adjustments, absolutely, but we end up about it now.
I think when you appoint people to these commissions, you gotta have good people. It's only as good as people that you have.
Well, I would have thought they would have understood that all this water and sewer lines are put in for this, this, and this, uh, whatever curve or what situation with their bronze, and I can smell the burgers, they're gonna hit that inner number one and 71, just blows my truck before.
And again, you know, they, they have to look at the fact that, you know, a storage facility is, is indifferent to their, their doctor's office or something like that. If it was, if it was, the water and sewer still remains the same.
Is there.
At this gentleman's age, I think, uh, I wonder if you remember what the water and sewer cap was from?
Twenty.
Twenty miles.
Twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars.
I mean, I think if you ask, you know, your average Joe citizen, you know, you got this vacant lot that you, they're gonna build this Baptist church, you'd probably go, well, okay, you know, or we can build a storage. Lots of new buildings and, and change what you get for, which would be rather nice. I'll take a church all day long.
So I'll, I'll just be the whatever guy, our, our issue, and when I say our, because we, we all disagree with what's sitting out there, but it is what it is, is with the commit, the, the planning commission or the procedures. I don't wanna say it's about somebody, but it's about with the procedures of the planning commission slash Board of Adjustment. Is that fair?
Well, I just think that the vision should have been communicated better. I would think the planning would be the one wanting to get us tax-generated businesses there.
Well, let me just say this, Sonny, and I'm not just defending Sonny, but I have said in most of those meetings, almost every one, a very few that I missed, and there is a lot of discussion. Now, it, on this particular item, it did not work out, you know, there wasn't enough, in my opinion, for what it's worth. I'm not on even one of them, I'm saying on even one of those. And since when people change, as Mr. Brown pointed out, you get different, I'll just say it, he doesn't live here, Mr. McKinney, Mr. Robert McKinney was very, uh, what's a good word for Mr. McKinney? I'm trying to be, I'm trying to be complimentary here, not, not anything else. He was very astute on those things, and it was about sales tax. So I don't, I'm not gonna pretend I remember the conversations about this, about variance by any means. But I think what we're all agreeing, if I may, is that we need to, how do you go back and look at these? I know Charles is kind of the keeper of the commission rules and regulations, so maybe there's, maybe there's an opportunity to do that. And, and you're right, no matter, either you have to have, you have to have trust and judgment of what they're doing or not. And I would like for them to, I'd like to see, and I don't know if you can do it, I don't know if you can do it by voting council, I don't know if you have to have another ordinance to say, no matter what you're gonna do, no matter what you're providing, then it comes back to council. Well, Daniel, did you say? I know, and I.
I don't know what came.
I, I don't either, but, but if it, if it, if there's something in place that says it doesn't have to, that's what I'm talking about. And I don't know. With Fort Smith, you said that they're looking into it. Is there kind of a timeline on, I mean, that they're gonna, if they're gonna resolve about it or whatever?
I didn't see one. I mean, they're going into all of those.
Problems and kinds of.
For, you know, for the same reasons, but.
But I will say, back to back, what I was gonna say about, he, he is, he is following, or he follows whatever they, the commission, he brings to you what the, what that commission and what the Board of Adjustments getting to bring back.
Who's on this planning commission and Board of Adjustments? How are you?
Uh, Travis Bartlett, Cole Rogers, Brandon, uh.
Relator.
And Taylor Rogers.
And, uh.
Brendan.
Brandon.
Hank Lenny. Brendan Hank Lenny.
Yes. Uh, I've got.
He's over there. What does he do for a living?
Uh, he works for a company for, 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 they're only four of them?
Yeah, we have Max's.
Yeah, I've got one that I'm bringing up, he's, and I fill in for Robert. But I have, have a memorandum from Carl Getton for the moratorium in Fort Smith. And basically, what they're, they're wanting to do is, just like we're talking about here, says additionally, staff, it proposes the addition of many storage warehouses, land use requiring development plan review by the planning commission and approval by the board of directors. Well, that's what they're trying to do. They're, they're changing it so that when storage rooms come in there, and they are specifically pulling out storage rooms, they're not saying, you know, everyone, but it says, uh, the plan review by the planning commission approved by the board of directors in the ETJ industrial and EG, ETJ 12 zoning district. I don't, I'd have to see what, what, how they do their zoning. Uh, so these amendments make ETJ many storage developments consistent with the development inside of corporate city.
Uh, ETJ is your extraterritorial jurisdiction, if we're not.
Well, I'm saying, maybe we just get our map out that we've got the whole city zone, blah, 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 C1, C2, R1, R5, and just look and see if we can find something that may be a good place for another I1 and shove all the, the storage buildings there, however we can do it.
And I believe the old Peter Building might still be I1 too.
I mean, obviously, yeah. You don't want much storage buildings there, but it's been that banking for so long, might as well do something, I guess.
Declare that a ban is built.
I would like to.
I can't.
That's what it is. That'll be on Mr..
Kevin Flubber.
That's your partner's list. He's got it on going back there.
Behind the, uh, token enforcement, because you know the old lot building behind there, that's, that's the thing that needs to be taken down and arced. And then the rest of it is there.
That's the one point of.
But that's, that's.
I would like to, and I'd like to say in a 60 or 90-day moratorium, just, you know, kind of think more about it.
We certainly don't have any, any coming in, you know, I, I think Niles will show up. You never know about him, he might show up tomorrow and it might be six months from now, but we have a stop order quarter on this mound. They can't bring any more guards in there, and he can't do anything to that property until it, until he brings us a plan. And he, I don't, you know, he's one of those that, that he talks big and then it doesn't, then it won't work.
But Mayor, take your point.
Yes, sir.
And to what Sonny brought up, at a minimum, I'd like to see these things come back to this board for approval. And, and, you know, somebody research this, uh, these things that go through this planning commission and Board of Adjustments, do they, can we have that come to us or not? Or, I mean, how's that work?
I can make that.
I mean, you still.
I can do an amendment and, uh, on our subdivision regulations where the variances will come to you.
Because, I mean, as Tim said, I mean, we're the ones getting phone calls here.
And we're the ones in the courtrooms.
Yeah.
But if that's what God'd like to do, I'll see, I'll make that happen.
We're the ones that stuff ourselves out for $600,000 to extend water and sewer lines that are not gonna be, we're not gonna get our return back.
That's the only fruit, unfortunately. Well, you got your, you got your rates set on, on that particular project, I'm doing this, because that's what that is up there, that's that project up there. The rates were set according, and I, I don't, anyway, the rates were set for the tax to pay, to pay for your investment. It wasn't looking ahead to go. Yeah, it, it's wrong, just for fun, clear where the, where that storage unit is.
That's been fantastic.
Forever. I mean, I think top of your head, give him $70,000 a year, tax revenue.
I mean, it to me is the equivalent of, you know, buddy, he's decided he's gonna put a machine shop in the middle of East Village, and the Board of Adjustment said, okay, buddy. And then you got this plaque that says, this is all zoned, are this and are that, and except we changed our mind and now it's, there's an industrial lot in the.
He's the landlord, or we'd have filled it when he built there.
Yeah, he owns the land, he wants to do it.
You were talking about Mike McAllister, for example. If Mike McAllister had decided that he wanted to move across the street to that lot and bought the lot, could we turn him down?
He would be a very small water sewer user.
I think so.
And then C2.
Doesn't he do business, he charges people tax on?
Now, that, he would.
He fabricates.
At least, at least we would get sales tax.
We're getting. Was, yeah, now, we hadn't already started.
Sort of.
I mean, I don't know, I don't know what that's classified, and I don't know.
It's the end user, it's not like a, you know, a tractor supplier, or, it, it's like, he's, he's wholesaling to other people that are retailing, and that's 90% of his business. We will receive some tax revenue, but not very much. Most of his stuff goes to Houston, Texas, to a corporation that I am sourcing parts and dishes from him. They go into larger things that go out to drilling, work rigs out in the Gulf, and then those guys get, they, they pay sales tax to the company in Houston, but that doesn't.
Yeah, I will write up an amendment to the subdivision regulation so that variances will come to you guys.
Thank you.
All right.
I think that, that doesn't take away, that takes what's there, that takes.
No, I'll agree with that, it is, but lipstick on it, and make it look as, as good as it can. Is he calling landscape? Okay.
I noticed they started on it, because they have some wood drills personally impressed, but I don't, I don't know what the, the plaques.
I mean, like I say, I mean, the ones they built, they're, they're, I, I mean, they look nice. But you gotta wonder 10 years from now what the development.
The one on Mazars, at the intersection of Mazars and Zero Street, you have to look back and realize that that is a storage.
I noticed, uh, in Fort Smith's deal, uh, one of the things like, uh, vehicles and boats and RVs, it's always happened to be on the backside of the property. You know, you go up and down the Army, and there's a, there's a storage building, there's all these.
The bus has been there for a few years.
Going down Army.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Uh, you might as well stay there.
Oh.
I believe. Fire code change before we pull?
Oh, yeah. Uh, gentlemen, this is kind of FYI, uh, the fire code, uh, has come out. And there are two, two council members, uh, were on the council, I believe, when we passed an ordinance for fencing around swimming pools. And it went up and it went down because of the outcry from citizens that were repealed because people that live basically around the Jack Nolan, that swimming pools, they have fences around their, their pools, but the ladies sitting down there, we had people that had pools and had ponds in their yard. They had fences around their pools, not around their pond, and so the council repealed it. But with the fire code now, uh, this is 109.1, uh, it requires fencing around pools, both during construction and afterwards, uh, above ground and below ground. And so we're gonna start enforcing that with, with any new pool permit. Hunter has called several of the, the pool manufacturers they're aware of. They say that other cities are doing that, so I don't see that, you know, there's not gonna be a whole lot of pushback on that because there is a fire code, and other people are doing it. But I just wanted you to know that if somebody comes in and they want that pool permit, and we tell them they're gonna have to fence up, and they complaining, and they calling you, you can tell them that's a fire code, uh, we, we approved fire code, and so that's what we're going to, uh, so we forward.
Some of this says IBC, International Building Code of 2012. So it was through an FBA that it was adopted through IBC, the International Building Code.
I think it falls specifically under replacement parts and labor for repairs of machinery. Says to government body of the city of first class, city of second class or in corporate town, they purchase following commodities with asylums and business. And I think this falls squarely under that.
And it's how much? How much? Is there a limit?
No, it gives a specific list of items. And I think that it falls under replacement parts and labor for repairs of machinery. There's no, there's no cost to it.
Like it's a category.
How the statute number?
No.
That's due yet.
I'd say twenty thousand.
It's been three million?
Was this already budgeted?
Yeah.
Yeah, some items have a dollar amount, Rod, but not that specific one.
So we don't need good proof.
That's what I said.
One person called you first.
All right. We're going to listen.
How was George your speaker? Yes, sir.
Nice to speak.
So you did your, and Mr. Plummer has the same thought. If you categorize this lower unit. Yes, sir. Maybe just tell me what it is and should we make that judgment?
That's a fourteen day, fifteen day, four year old Ford. Just like other great.
My sherry.
What is one?
This is a lower unit used for operation or work for the process of the oil of treatment process.
I think that falls under.
And also have two pumps and a drive system and lift station.
You skipped them down? Oh, sorry. You skipped them down to nine or ten where?
Can we include any?
Okay, is that what you just?
Yeah, okay. Move this way on this side.
Yep.
So both the codes.
Nine is off the table?
Well, I think.
Seven and nine.
Seven and nine, yeah. Right. Which one? Well, six, seven, nine. Six, seven, nine.
I mean, oddly enough, it says the six one off around state car.
What he said?
Are we on egg now?
Uh, we are, yep. Yes.
All right. Can I ask a question about that? Why are we not using the negotiated state bidding?
There's nothing available.
Just absolutely not a word.
Not a, not a three quarters. I'm just saying you have three quarters of a truck. But we did this last year. And actually, we were waiting for him last year. We ordered two trucks and one truck in Georgia that still had a receipt. So the route I was going to take this year was to try to find one, set my watch somewhere and just go by. And I actually called twelve dealerships and I found three trucks.
So you found three and. For dealerships that fit what y'all want.
Yeah. They all come in lower than I had budgeted. The cheapest one had a point seven eight, gets that Bob rubber shuttle on the first line. And I budgeted fifty two thousand for that.
So you've actually got bids?
Yes.
So we're waiting competitive bidding and you're actually got bids and you're taking the lowest bid?
Yeah, pretty much.
So then why wait for competitive?
Well, he's got quotes. It's not like they're in sealed bids or come here over the above.
I wasn't sure exactly how that worked. I knew I had these phone calls trying to bid anyway, so.
Well, getting quotes is different from the bids.
There is nothing special about the truck. It's just a three quarter ton.
It's just a same cab, long wheelbase, four wheel drive, gas, three quarter ton truck, light, work truck crash.
That one in the parking lot, what do you give it for?
Clean can.
And nothing, state bid does nothing.
Nothing that I, nothing that I could find. I pulled it up and looked and it was available. And it had two that said they were available and then you click on them and it shows no bid.
Is that a fleet price on your?
Uh, no, that's not fleet price. That's just a.
So the truck that they, say they have the less expensive one that you said, do they have it or do you have to order it?
No, they have, they have, they said they can have it three days.
Three days.
I asked three other dealerships about orders. They were four dealerships and they told me they were here, out of orders to open bid. And then that one said they wanted to allow us to order which type of trucks from the whole world company this time.
Is this a, get my, is it run around truck? I mean, is it a job job or specific?
A whole equipment.
Pulling?
Yeah, it'll be.
Pulling? Okay. They're.
Two standard five ton escalator.
Now, before you did the list, Travis just sat down here. If it were six months old, he could buy it.
You're saying this is replacing something?
I wonder if you bid, yes.
So just.
Six days, I'm looking at that. It's huge.
So being a new vehicle, he still needs to wait competitive?
Yeah, it's not replacing per se, it's.
Right.
He could, he could invite a new motor vehicle from a licensed automobile dealership in the state of Arkansas for an amount not to exceed the fleet price awarded by the office of state for hearing it.
So what would be the fleet price?
I didn't say that because general motors didn't have anything on state security. It was all ram and a Ford. So I mean, I don't know if you can compare Chevrolet to a Ford.
No, you cannot.
You certainly can't.
Four hundred.
So it specifically says the state unit prices?
Fleet price. They can't exceed. But since I did what it bids on that, it's.
It doesn't matter, yeah, it's a moot point, okay. I'm fine.
I'll just say the commission asked him to call around and get a couple more quotes just, just to make sure we're getting a good price.
I make motion to adopt resolution?
Second.
Have a motion to second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Red one.
Yes.
John? Yes. Wait for him.
Thank you, sir. He scared you, just wanted to do that.
You did, just wanted to.
That's your adrenaline.
Chief?
City, most likely a replacement piece of machinery that has tires and. All right. The, I have a resolution in front of you to wait for that bidding for the first of the fall over the city of Greenwood Park. This would be a replacement land unit. Pay contact with, after carrying all the stuff that Will's had problems with the bidding, any type of bids, took out my Tahoe's back in November. I called up four Chevrolet, I've been quiet and he said he would give me a specs and he gave me a cost of a twenty two model. But in his email, he says, I'd love to be able to still order one, but I cannot. It's in the fifth quarter of two thousand twenty three. It has to do with two thousand twenty four and he would not have any model pricing in the sentence for that yet. And so I'm.
Who's that?
It's up to four Chevrolet. And so I contacted some of the chiefs up in Long West Arkansas and I knew they had gotten a couple up there that seen. And I said, where y'all making, where y'all getting these at? And they referred me over to Superior Auto Group in solid strength compared to them. So I contacted him and he said, yeah, we order five hundred fleet vehicles at a time every, every day. And there's about fifteen minute opening to order those vehicles. And he said, if you want to get that over here, you won't get them. And I said, well, I'm looking for a red one. And he went through his list and said, I have one red fleet Chevy Tahoe. It's a, it's called a special services vehicle. It's a police, police unit, but it doesn't have the interceptor engine. Just a special vehicle. He said, I have one left and I would tag it for you if you want me to. And let's kind of hold it for you and I'll give you a quote. And so he quoted for me. And the only thing, it had, it had lock seats, so we changed both of the vials. And it's a four wheel drive, commercial equipped, fleet pricing. And the price came up around fifty thousand two ninety two after everything was said and done. And so I'm asking you guys. I went to bid.
Why aren't you buying state vehicles?
They don't have.
They don't have anything there, state vehicle.
Unfortunately, I mean, I don't know.
Have you considered?
The walkers or something, you know.
This is the state, this is, what's the state bid price on the same?
Well, it's a fleet price. I don't know what that even.
Fleet price. We didn't get bids on those either.
That's the problem is nobody would give them a bid because these manufacturers won't give a price. And so when you open up the bid list, there are nothing that has been bid coincidentally.
As you consider going from firing red to a dark gray, like those seven third four thousand.
Oh, they want Cadillac.
Cadillac.
Chief driving around the Cadillac, I'm asking. You have to get shit for those. We're hoping, we want to stick with whatever.
Tell me again where you found them?
Superior, Superior Auto Group.
That where the police vehicle came from the other day?
Yes. They got, they got hooked in. He had a hot one there. They sent me a picture of it and I was like, why aren't you looking up here? They got it.
And tell me how much?
Uh, for this one is.
Fifty two ninety two.
There is fifty thousand two ninety two. That's after we had the lot seats to it. Those were fourteen hundred.
And that, that was in your budget?
It's on your budget.
What about the accessories and stuff that have to be?
We got it.
And that's budgeted there?
Seven.
How much was that?
They made it fifteen.
How much?
Fifteen thousand.
And they're a, they're a, well, you look at they one regular price. So they one regular, one two.
So are you trading a vehicle in?
No.
Keeping the vehicle?
Yeah, we'll keep it here. I think trade in on that.
Okay.
If they were interested in doing that. We'll try again. But we'll either sell it in the auction or we keep it for, on the other part. So we can keep it for the department. You know, we got a person there now, right? A person there now that's doing metal lines. I've driven them doing that and a gas burner and a diesel.
So you're going?
Right now, it's not even there. We'll pick it up tomorrow. He said it's probably three or four weeks out. And then we're going to have to buy some stuff on it. He said that can be six months out. So I still have to use this one for, for emergency runs until I get it out with emergency lights.
So you may take possession of it in six months?
Well, may take possession. He said when it gets here, we've got a tag for you. You've got to come get it, so someone else. So we'll probably get it here in a couple, a couple of weeks. We'll, we'll see what we can do. I think it's a lot of time to get it. We just got to do, we want to make sure it's all even before I start making runs on it.
They also upped it to.
Yeah, they do. They're away with, they're away with the dealer. They can do it all right there. So we're going to talk to them about that. And then I found, also found out it's Arkansas Valley, the, the, our even radios. That started doing that.
Why's it have to be four or after?
Last week? This week?
Sounds good.
All the stuff, snow, the ice. It's kind of weird, maybe problems sliding around. Pretty hard to look back here. We're solid sheet ice trying to turn around back there.
I like the word. Motion is taken to adopt the resolution.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Ricker?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Ray Moore?
Yes.
Rick Daniel?
Yeah.
So how?
Yes.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you, chief. Next up is police. Resolution to wait bidding on twenty forty three total. We need a car lot, so.
Thanks, sir. This is kind of getting details with the Dodgers that are on state bids. We don't know when they're going in. So I have a two part of it, but hence this, my good. Our vehicle is sitting on a lot. We can go pick it up. It's the vehicle that chief told me about and actually, I think they sold that one. But someone ordered four and I'm looking for it. So each one is sitting there. And they do have the two wheel drive Tahoe also. So sitting here listening to all this, I was thinking if it's possible to get the amount, the difference between the Durango that there's one of ours going to take, unless they can get it in months. And I can, they have one on a lot up there, it's two wheel drive. But I can get additional to this four wheel drive. And I'm asking you about waiting for the bidding on. So it would actually be two of them to wait for the bidding. Or I can stick with the Durango and wait like months to see if they can get. And it didn't sound very positive, but they're probably about the cars. But the business is I don't have to go Michigan, North Carolina and Georgia to pick up cars this year.
How many total vehicles you can get this year? Three?
Two.
Good.
Besides the chief, I mean, your vehicle, they need this replaced?
That was last year.
That was twenty two. You get two besides your.
Yes, one, we needed one and then one to replace that can I do.
So you're saying this needs to be altered to two vehicles?
If I could do that, I just thought about that sitting back there and the conversation I had earlier. He didn't sound very positive that he could even get Dodge to put one out. So if I don't take advantage of what he has on a lot, I'm afraid that I don't have to go to the state again.
What's the, what's the price on these two vehicles?
Uh, the, the four wheel drive is forty seven.
Forty nine, four sixty seven is budgeted. I don't know what your total gradual price is. Was it forty seven? You cut the check.
Right.
Forty nine, four sixty.
Whatever's on that.
Forty nine, four sixty seven is budgeted.
The dirt was fifty thousand dollars.
Well, I didn't change out my false seats. I'll be able to, but I don't have to get, I don't have some time to do it. Mine, I don't have to worry about mine holding the smoke on whatever else it is that chief has worked on.
False.
Right, why don't I have one of those? It'll do. I'll be all right.
How much it cost to change the seats, sir?
Fourteen hundred.
Fourteen.
So.
Your total is forty seven, nine seventy.
In the budget?
For this four wheel drive.
Four, that's what you, that's the cost.
Again, Dodge?
Forty seven, nine seventy.
And how much was the Durango?
With Durango, budget is forty four, five, forty four thousand five hundred.
And the two wheel drive Tahoe is forty five. And I was trying to find that in my emails. It's like a thousand dollar difference I would need to add to it or difference in the Tahoe and the Durango.
Like you said, you wouldn't have to drive to Michigan or Fort Carolina or Capica, Kansas or anything.
What do you think it sounds? If you have your vehicles now, you're going to get them much on sure. That's what they told these guys.
Sure, how about twenty three seventy five for a seat?
You want?
Twenty three seventy five.
Twenty three seventy five.
That's the difference in your price and his price.
Dirt is red. Any more red?
I got all cross stuff there. I don't know what the difference between what he's buying and what I'm buying. The vehicle they have, how many prices?
And yours is four wheel drive too, the forty seven, nine, seven.
The forty seven nine is four wheel drive.
Yes.
There is a difference between the PPVs that Will's buying and the SSVs that you're buying.
Well, I didn't get them SSV. I was going to get them. Now, the two wheel drive is equally.
Okay.
Do you have an interseater in there? Motor? Like that?
It's the same motor.
It's like yours is a little more expensive.
Do you think? It's a chip.
Or? I make money without prison. Same.
With the.
Future. We have a motion to second.
I can find the prices.
Sir, oh, the one or two, I took.
Six thousand dollar difference.
And what is the other vehicle?
It's a trailer and a package.
It's a different transmission to tow with.
Dodge Durango, we're sitting here.
And it's got forty four, five budget for it. We don't know how much you, how much you get that.
It's forty.
Four thousand, four five. Oh, to get a four wheel drive, it would be a thousand or eighty.
No, that's.
No, the two wheels, two eighty. No, I'm talking about the Durango. He said he had forty four, five budget for the Durango. But if I'm going to do that, it must weigh part out here by another two wheel drive Tahoe, it's on a lot.
Right.
But it's going to be a forty five, five, a thousand.
I think the exact purchase, I can find it now.
That's fine. He's got thirteen thousand for each vehicle.
So you need that number to put in that resolution? Okay, so a motion to second.
I just have the balls of, they're across. It's Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Ricker?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Ray Moore?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Val?
Yes.
Here.
My daughter's thirteen outfit on. My daughter's fifteen, well, still.
Well, you can outfit his.
Planning a market confirmation, do members deserve a drink or planning mission?
I don't know if y'all know it or not, but Robert Cunney retired from the planning commission and moved to Missouri. So he had a vacancy in the planning commission. And I've been looking for somebody to represent the west end of the town. We've got, proud to have our planning commissioners spread out over town. And the gentleman, John Overmark, had agreed that if y'all would approve the town. He lives on Corcosa Street out in Westwood. John is married. He's in his middle thirties. He's married to that two little girl. He worked for Sebastian County out of Big Garen. And I would like for you to approve his appointment to the commission. I think he makes a good one. He's kind of, he's a senior, but he said he worked for Big Garen out there. And I would like a good one. I think so, like I said, I'd be wanting somebody to.
We're going as far west as you can get. Other than Walmart, it's a good word for Andy out there. I like it. He can probably be the most youthful member you have.
Well.
What's his last name?
How, how long was Robert Cunney on the commission? I was thinking like. Fourteen years. I don't know. Do you have any ideas, Charlie? I'm there for some time, of course, you know, your own council.
And he got off and back on.
Yeah.
Like at least fifteen years.
Yeah, and you know, it seemed like it would be a long period of time for me to go over to you and say like that. You'd be, he'd still be a commit, but he's off.
I'm like a motion we approve, John Overmark?
Second. I have a motion to second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Ricker?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Ray Moore?
Yes.
Rick Daniel?
Yes.
Gentlemen, last item here is a request for final plaque review and approval for the curve phase one A located at the intersection of West Center and intersection on South. This is the African brick D engineering on behalf of NJE construction. Final plaque has received review and approved by Greenwood Planning Commission and the Department of Heds. I would recommend the approval of this final plaque based on the fact that they, they, the commission approved, Department of Heds approved, the bonding and the amount of two hundred and seventy four thousand, two hundred and thirty five dollars and thirty nine cents. And then the approval by the city attorney once he gets the bonding.
How long will it take for the, get the bonding approved, city attorney?
How long would it take to get the bonding? Two weeks. And I, I think Travis could approve it pretty, pretty quickly. I mean, it actually clear a contract with that. So we're looking at a couple of weeks.
How many, how many phases are we talking about?
This is first phase. This is the, the lot that, that will be where Brahms is. That's all that we're approving.
What are the?
Bonding. This bonding will cover anything in phase one.
That's what I hate about that.
You have a map there, a tall map. You have a map of this area.
This bonding dollar value is just for phase one?
Yes. And you should have a copy of all the bond, of the streets, the water sewer. And you also should have a copy of the emails from each department head approving the amount for their portion of it.
Does the, on the asphalt for the collector road, is that a, is that two or three inches?
Two. You remember?
The bond is figured on two and a half ounces.
Yeah, I'm worried is it, so are we going to write for, I'm equivalent or is it going to be twelve ton? I don't know, those have, you know, in the, in the street guidelines, you know, that said it for collector road. You know, I don't know if there are going to be heavy trucks going to Brahms or not or.
Probably got to stay out here. Well, we can, we can, we can design it that way. I haven't looked and I was planning on just following the, the city standards, pre-standards. So if we need to approve it into the hog, they have your load rating.
I'm, you know.
A lot of times what happens is this is some law of the front of the deal. It has a development towards the back. We go through there or we tear up that with the cement trucks and the big bulkwork or the belt hog, tractor. That's one thing to run into. Get a nice paved front road and as they move to the back.
Eventually we'll have three, three entrances into that project.
Well, that's what I would hope is we'd use a separate other entrance to get to the other side. Once we get, we've got the front paved and open verity or whatever.
You got access off the seventy one farther north, right hand and all of the.
Cedar Valley.
Cedar Valley.
Right. And of course, that they've done too, to the, to the development too, to make sure that that happens.
Well, I'm sure the county wants a better bond issue on that Cedar Valley. If it gets torn up with construction, traffic hog, all that works. Or the county can do that. We've got, we've got a coddle lot with roads getting torn up there, construction and have three groups. President, President Center.
Yeah, I'd like to say it'd be ready for the three inch.
We can do that. Any other questions?
The, uh, this is one, uh, on the, uh, is there a sidewalk on that part of that? You know, for the Brahms or is there a sidewalk included there or is that Brahms responsibility or whatever? Or does it need a sidewalk, whatever?
That's Rod's question. What do you do with still rocks?
Yeah, I did ask Rod's question.
I just want to make sure it doesn't move forward until city attorney says it's a good call.
What is that?
Five percent.
It wasn't included in the, in the bond. If I remember right, that law can be on Brahms and shelters, on Brahms to, to the sidewalk.
It'd be on the developers that put the sidewalk in?
I think that's the way we do it here in the subdivision.
That's what I was thinking too, the, the developers to, to in the sidewalk.
Well, when we did that, so we didn't have a little hodgepodge of missing sidewalks.
Well, it seems like you did the casings, the casings put their sidewalks and then.
Well, then we need to go back to make sure we don't waive that. I'm just putting money into the sidewalk, but I'm not getting a little side. That's what I could walk by communication there. What do you think?
So a sidewalk needs to be included in there then, right? Or is it, or you're saying it is included?
It would be included on the plans and then it would be the responsibility of developers to put in Brahms. It would be their responsibility to put in. We put it on the construction plans. I don't remember if it shows that they're not, but we can make sure that Brahms is on there.
So this plaque is just a street entryway, whatever decorative. So this plant is just a street entryway, whatever decorative, and then hopefully for the library, the Brom's or the front area.
Well, really just the Brom's.
Or now.
Originally we had two or three lots on there. We decided to make it simple and just go with this single, one lot.
And this Brom will come in with their building plans, and that's where we would see inside.
That's right. That's where you require the sidewalk.
Plan space, anything.
Where is Brom going? On this, where it says one? First lot, first lot.
It's just one lot on this, on this page.
And then the library is over there, but around about the thing.
And then Dalton, right, right hand side.
The.
Which one's Brom's and Dale's?
The, the connection to, uh, Subertian or Center Street? You know, is that the, uh, I guess number twenty, you know, where it says concrete intersection apron? Or is it number eighteen, the inlet and extensions? You know, cause I said, it does not really show here, you know, a connection actually to the, uh, Center Street.
It's, it's in the asphalt, and there's aprons, I think you just said, the, uh, concrete aprons. Concrete intersection aprons and swells, hundred fifty square yards of concrete.
So that, that would cover the connecting to the, uh, Center, uh, Center Street?
Yes, that's, that's where that is. Two aprons and a swell, oh, Brom. And this, it, this was approved by the highway department before they turned it over, so this, it is all there, uh, got.
I just want to record one more time the same, the track will be chaos in this area with the stoplight, Brom's and whatever else going on. I just.
You, you may be on this.
Thank you.
All right.
Close call.
I just have one more clarification, you know, as like addressed to Dalton. You know, you, you said that, uh, you know, that, uh, how you worded there, that, uh, thank you for that, it looks good. Whatever, I was wondering if you guys claim that?
Well, I called Jeremy Shore when I said need the bond estimate up, and he gave me a price of around two hundred fifty dollars per foot, I mean, per foot, by the, so, and, and bond comes in revenue. I don't know, if Jacob's been seeing the rear costs and doing the work, so, I don't have any doubt. I just base it off what we paid last time.
So you're saying the replacement therapy is around one ten?
No, around two fifty. Uh, the bond estimate I got from Chad or Jay Lee, he was sending me, which was a hundred and ten dollars.
And that's for which option?
Sure.
I guess I'm kind of lost there. We can sample this. Is it the, uh, what item would you refer that to? Item two.
If you figure it around, there's a great amount per foot, because that's about a hundred and ten dollars per foot played this month, it's a tire.
Oh, okay.
Whereas we, we typically pay around two fifty based off the last project we done, which was our fellow. That was about two hundred fifty dollars per foot, and that's the same kind of line I'm figuring out here. And there's, there could be some variations of the, um, depths and things like that, but I don't see it being a hundred.
Chief.
But I get what value on this first, it's worth.
Yours is based on your power calls.
Yeah, it's based on power calls, if they have these properties.
We would bond this at what it would cost us if we hadn't, if Jacob walks off, we bonded it what it's gonna cost us to fix it at where Golden Ridge is.
That's where our bonding figure should be, is when we step in, Travis takes over, we gotta have somebody to finish it. We don't have to work any kind of, we can, yeah, go in there and make sure we have enough money there.
Right. I got my numbers from, uh, East Village, uh, bids that came in on, on that, so. You know, it's gonna be variable, depends on how many win or defeat you put in, uh, makes a difference on the, on the price, but that's where I got mine numbers from.
A small project like what they're gonna phase one is going to be more expensive per foot than a large project spread out like East Village.
So you think it should be what?
I think that this bond needs to be around thirty-three thousand.
So rock and devil.
Rock and devil, what you have?
Your, your number, Mr. Burkey, is the fourteen-three?
That's right.
We're just, we're just talking specifically about the sewer, right, being, well, you're just talking about. And Chad, you got your numbers for what they're doing out here in the East Village?
Yes, right, it is a larger product, right, I agree with what, what you're saying, right? That's what we had, we're approaching.
So, uh, John, your thing, what, what was your kind of rough estimate, or thirty?
It's around two hundred fifty dollars per foot.
So you, then that'd be around thirty, you said, or twenty?
Thirty-two, five, thirty-three thousand, somewhere in that neighborhood.
I think we usually add, you know, at least, you know, sixteen or so to go to this.
And this is our safety net. Things go bad. We have a track record of having people, I mean, things go bad.
We have something with the oats or whatever, you know, I mean.
Yes, oats is one of them.
Yeah.
We have to come in and have somebody go in there and do it.
And that's just made.
Your numbers from a previous budget.
It's from the rainbow, that one, we have.
Seven at three hundred.
Right.
The phase one complete bond is three hundred?
I've changed it up.
Well, that, it'd still be.
If, if that matters.
It's gonna be short eight thousand dollars.
Your number is that?
At least Sonny's numbers, two. So it'd be four, or about, or, or that. Which is more than what you said.
Are we gonna dive into the water line next, or there was a, is there any issue with that?
I think that's where we're gonna adjust.
I know that. Yeah, we, we bumped it up, and it just, it's not very much, but it's fair, if you don't include your fire line, actually, the Brom's. You may have those forty-fives on my ability.
Yes.
I have it actually very specifically sent on like construction approval and impact and things like that. This is the total bond amount of dollars, uh, we confirmed. We feel comfortable with that.
Chad, you're good, all right?
Yes, sir. Well, Chad pointed out the specifications were higher because of the hard rock standards.
Right, that's right. You meant those off, right off the bat.
Yes. But the whole changes on the AC, which you bought.
Yeah, yeah, right. We're kind of, was a good time, if you will.
So what would be left going to on the sewer? Start at three plus.
I would suggest that, I just had a little bit of buffer, not much, you know, from two hundred fifty to one hundred thirty feet, I believe, thirty-two, five, and then thirty-three.
I don't have a problem with that. I don't think Burton's going anywhere, but we've thought that before. It's just commercial.
So you're going with the three hundred, or, or just bump it up to nineteen, or what?
Three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand.
Now, we have, I've got all these, I don't think that's. Will we have to adjust all these numbers to get that total?
Just adjust your sewer by that amount.
We're talking twenty-five grand.
You know, I haven't required three bonds, one bond, you know, how that works.
These are up for each phase?
Well, for these bonds that Jacob provides, for one bond suffice, so for three bonds.
What's, what's wrong with that, with one bond for all?
For the three phases.
In the past, it's just been one bond.
That's, that's, I'm sure.
If he did that, that'd be easier than what Tim just said, so it didn't make it three hundred thousand.
Yes, three hundred thousand, one bond, all the developers.
I just think we'll get all these.
You have to all add up.
Add up to it, the water, the sewer, the street, I don't.
Yeah, it's a total of two seventy-five, so right to twenty-five thousand, which is really well, no, it becomes all dream dad here.
So you're not having to adjust each, each one, so.
Yeah.
So you're adjusting.
If the bonding agency needs to see this, I'll, I'll make the difference up on the sewer, so.
Yeah, right.
Drainage? You've got street sewer, water, you've got drainage engineered into this?
Uh, yes, it is. I just, that first phase.
Just for the first phase.
And, and just to make sure, you know, Chad, that, uh, with the Brom's, you're already allowing for the, uh, I mean, you're not gonna put a curb, and then they're gonna cut into the curb, but you know, or whatever. I mean, is it gonna allow for their entrances into the?
Yes, they have one entrance, two entrances, two entrances, yeah, well, we leave that in account. I, I'm sure that part will be, well, I'm assuming it'll be kind of constructed, coordinated with.
We don't have any hanging front, so that was a big motion that we approved this for three hundred thousand dollar total bond for three. Phase one, one A, for street, sewer, and water pending the city attorney's approval of that bond. Can I say anything?
I say it.
You say it.
I say it.
A motion is second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Ricker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Raymore?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Very good.
Uh, Department reports questions from council. Gentlemen, you have anything for the, uh, Department?
Uh, just with this, I mean, what is the timeline now for, uh, for any burger? Are you asking Mr. Burton?
You have a timeline, Mr. Burton? The, any burger?
Sounds extra for this council, huh?
As long as it took to bring that.
Yeah.
Can we extend? As long as lines is a lot of burger blows out there in Venus? A little longer than that. All right, anything from any of the other Department heads, council? Not to go into more.
I'd just like to say the sidewalk looks phenomenal.
Even though it's leaking white?
Yeah. I like the big and white.
I do too.
I think it just looks great.
I agree.
How are we coming on phase?
We have a meeting with, uh, Jeremy Shores.
Next week.
Next week to sit down, and we've already had several discussions with him.
They're working on the design as it speaks, as it says.
Design work has been done, we have a list of property owners, we'll need to get, uh, I think Daniel was excited about getting each one.
No. I just, I just gotta be honest.
I'm just getting my, just young Heather's.
Is the primary in charge of maintenance?
You want it as well?
Sir?
How many is he guys?
All the prices go up as well on three streets, you know, you're just.
Oh, yeah. So, we, we, uh, experienced from phase one, for the time we got the grant, till it went out for bid, what was that increase time? Seventy thousand dollars? Lots.
Going from eighty twenty to a sixty forty.
Yeah, so that's a six hundred thousand dollar sidewalk you're looking at. But, good news is it technically.
Oh, yeah.
Agreed with eighty twenty, but now he's right, it's about sixty forty with the increase. So it's, it'll be interesting, interesting to see what's the bid.
Right now, concrete holding.
Is it?
Instead, so.
So maybe, maybe we get by.
Well, it'd, it'd depend on the design.
We don't know what they're gonna do with parking lots and.
And you got two bridges there on phase two, and parking lots, so we'll see how that goes. Uh, originally, if you remember, just so everybody's on the same page, with the phase two was to go pickup at the, at the golden years ago, west, Walmart. Uh, but Jerry and I discussed, well, Sonny and a few others, that maybe bigger bank, the bucket's coming back east to Bass Street. So, but it's been kind of decided that we'll, we'll talk about that, we'll meet next week with Jerry to see what that means. So we, we have the ability to swap those two phases if we want to, with RDOT, there's no issue there. And, and to answer your next question, hopefully, or you're at least thinking about it, that we will be applying, what's the, what's the deadline, or, you know, Daniel, right off.
I've got it on my email.
So we'll be applying.
I've reached out to me and stuff, with RDOT, so has Jeff, I believe.
Yeah, that's right, you make a decision.
What would you want phase three to be?
Well, phase three, if we go, if we come into Bass Street for two, three, we'll be going to Walmart, because it's already, and we don't have to do that, but that's what's kind of preliminary, preliminarily drawn, if you will.
I don't know. It look, appears to be that there's most people walking to Walmart, and you step up.
I, I would agree.
That's why, you know, we want to go that way with the side.
And I, I keep thinking, that looks pretty dangerous, yeah.
It is, I agree. We just have to, when I say main for the buck, we got to go, uh, I believe, if I remember three, Sonny helped me, were we going under that bridge by Davis Gym?
That was the thought, yeah.
That never a done deal, but that bridge is narrower, or there's not a much, there's not much underneath it, like we have right here at City Hall, or the one by the senior center, to accommodate sidewalks, so that's a, so that's a whole different ball of, of deal.
Sidewalks, phase two, phase three, flip lots, or whatever it was, for some reason, it looks like they're really getting, walking to Walmart, and it looks like a higher speed.
But there are more people walking from Denver to downtown than are going to Walmart.
Yeah, I think they kind of disappeared, or they meet, they get in the middle, and you don't see them as much as you would when they're going to Walmart, it's pretty often.
Maybe, I don't know, some visitors are hitting so many parking lots.
Right, right.
They are.
But we'll, we'll, uh, know that we're on it, and know that we will do everything in our pickability to keep this from dragging out for four years.
Because it gets more expensive.
To no fault of anybody, that was, this is what happened.
Well, that's the property owners, whereas, was the.
Well, those folks, yeah.
Yes.
That was the whole.
Yes.
If we could add to our list, the, there's a lot of people that walk from, uh, Hall Homes area.
Absolutely.
To downtown, I mean, a lot of those folks don't have cars.
Yeah, certainly.
That'd be a great thought.
Yeah, I agree, you know, I live, I don't ever gonna build sidewalks to my house, because that's a bad thing to do. Toward my house isn't a good idea. Those folks come down off the hill, uh, in that whole area, the, the Dollar Gym, a lot. And the same thing from Hall Homes coming down, uh, those kids come down, they'll, they'll, they'll take whatever streets available, tend to get down.
At one time, they approved a sidewalk that came behind Robert McKenney's property.
Right.
And connected to the emergency.
Yeah, we, yeah, we literally have sidewalk going nowhere, so there, there's already a section that we can build on. And.
When the street was, they built the duplexes, that, that would come to approve.
Yeah.
That.
Is, is those apartments being built there at, uh?
With Bean Place?
Are those gonna have sidewalk?
We did not, uh, I don't remember, I think. We did not, uh, I don't remember, I think, is that one that was in lieu of another one or not? I mean, I don't know.
That was, that was, you know, the sidewalk was supposed to.
Oh, actually, yeah, that, sorry. The sidewalk originally was going to be on that side and they, we put it on the side of the, all right, on Seers, on the side of.
On the emergency.
We built the sidewalk, when I was with the county, we built the sidewalk across. And so that, that'd be where they connect the other.
And added by a prior guy, try, there's not a sidewalk in front of the store.
Other is not.
Speaking of walkways and grocery shopping and all that, you know, with Harps, I see a lot of people coming down Main Street, cutting through there and cutting through Pizza Barn to that back wafer there, and they're carrying groceries as well back and forth through there. Is there a crosswalk? I, I don't know, I don't remember, but y'all might know, is there a crosswalk at that stoplight that's there that, in the wild there, right behind the police station? I just, you know, just kind of.
Coming by the bridge?
Yeah.
I mean, they do right there at Pizza Barn.
I think there kind of was and it got.
Yeah, I get, so when the, when the overlay, I mean, when the, they stopped the overlay and then they milled, we had to call them back to come in and mill, so I think there was one, it's just.
There was, there was one more cross there.
To the bridge, yeah, from, from the PD sidewalk to.
Yes. So the closest one to that point, correct me if I'm wrong, is it to cross from the church over to the bank and then go that way safely? I'm just. Yeah, well, crosswalks and sidewalks.
Definitely one by Pizza Barn over Farmer's Bank because Miss Betty used to come out there and stop me.
Anyway.
So I don't know, I know, we, and now that that's ours, well, that's not ours yet.
Nope.
But it will not be ours until, until we redirect traffic out there on the new, on the new section, but we can look at part of the route of the crosswalks. And I've got a call too from, quick update on, on bypass, nobody asked, with the traffic relief, got a call, some communication from RDOT in regard to removal of this bridge right here beside City Hall specifically, and they're measuring and surveying, and the question was to us, to me, if, almost presented to me like, who takes that bridge out? And we're talking way down the road. That one right there. Wow, you people are so disoriented. Anyway. Thank you, thank you. So that bridge is going to come out and we're going to put a new bridge. Their, their question was to me, how's that going to affect our walkability on the trail? I said, you, you let us know, we'll, she'll take me trail down, and there's so much more access, you can access that trail anywhere on the other side of the bridge and minor.
They're not going to do that until, I thought they weren't going to do those two bridges until after.
Main Street.
Right, I'm just saying, it gives me a warm fuzzy feeling, but their calling just actually acknowledged that, what do you, and they also asked me, so there's, there's that one, and then they asked me about the trail when they take, extend Main Street, whatever we do with the over to the bypass, the traffic relief, right, and that trail, so they'll have to cut that one literally, and when I talked to her about signaling, as in, as in fatal, this trail up there where they have sections of water to put history and all that, so it's, it's coming together, it's just a lot of hit and miss, yes, sir.
What about a, a box covert right there where people can still walk through there? Kind of like Ufus has that tunnel?
Underneath?
Underneath, yeah.
Something up there behind the Sonic?
Oh, well, the Main Street.
I'm talking about.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know, it'll, it'll all be, we, we get to have a sense of on it, I mean, they're going to pay for it, so I'm sure that it'll be whatever they want to pay for.
And the conversations.
But that's low anyway through there, so it seems like a box covert would probably work in there.
There you go, being an engineer.
The considerations and conversations with Jeremy Shores, applying for the grant, I think the faster we can get to the library and support the library. I think kids should be able to walk to the library. And I don't know, when you're making decisions, and I don't care, I just like the fact that we're getting sidewalks. If it's coming back this way, that's okay, but the faster we can get out that way and be able to get kids out of neighborhoods that can walk in the summer to the library, the better off we are.
Or to Bronx.
Yeah.
Or walk to Bronx.
That's right, books and trains.
Bronx is fine, yeah, but the library is the one I was.
I know, but they could, you know, go ice cream and a book.
I didn't do it wrong, but I'm, I'm wrong, but excited. It's these curve developments here that's, get this, pick up here and things through the lawn, I think the, then you're going to see some. Jim's been working with the library.
I can tell you the library staff is excited about going to Bronx.
The boring under the road is complete?
The boring is complete, yes, sir. I got, in fact, I have a picture with him pushing it underneath that road, pretty impressive. Pushed that thing right through. That was, that was interesting to watch, to say the least.
Okay. Uh, we're going to have a construction detail for the stuff that you do at Senior Citizens Building or?
I've got a meeting next week, Stand Up and I will walk through there, tell them the new one.
Yeah.
So Mr. Buddy Lloyd, I'll give him some kudos or cadews, that's the gentleman from Chicago. Is that okay for me to say that publicly, or are you okay with that now that I've said it? Mr. Lloyd has offered his services free of charge to be the construction manager on that project out there at that building. So we've met Hunter, myself, Buddy, and I think they've been back since I've met with them. Uh, so we are, we have a hundred and fifty or sixty thousand dollars to go toward, to go towards what we need to do out there to make that better than it is, but we're also, everybody keep your fingers crossed on a half a million dollar grant through Wapah Diddy that we'll hear about on the fifteenth, I think, I believe, on that. So I don't know, did that enter, I don't have a.
I don't know if he had a, like, detailed what I was going to do and the hammers it's going to cost.
They're working on it, they're working on it. I don't have anything to show you yet, we'll get you something. I mean, you can go out there today and rent it, as it was, but to get the senior center, to get the center in there, we need to do some upgrades. Are we doing that though, renting? Is that an option? I mean, like, right now? We haven't, we're not right now. One, I haven't just started, one because I didn't want to try to start renting it and then all of a sudden they come in there, start tearing a wall. The kitchen is the priority out there, right? So it's going to be a little, we probably won't be able to do it until they get through it. Unless, unless I'm told that we can't start for two months or three months, then we could, we could rent it, I don't know. I'd like to get on those. Yeah, oh, absolutely. Anything else?
Maybe I'll just give everybody an update, Jacob's sitting there, uh, going to go out to the lake and look, uh, he has the south, the south, right? The south approach to the bridge is complete, and it looks awesome. So he's working, he's digging back across the lake now, maybe start on this north side, you know, see how the weather goes, but, and then several of us met over in the back of the bridge, this fabrication yard, it's actually standing up. Standing up, got to steal across it, it's a big structure. So, uh, I told him Jacob was going to be done by the end of February, and the fabricator said, I'll be ahead of him, so. Those two guys are running a lot faster than I am, I have to figure out how to put Jackie on the thing, so. But the project's going well, looks good.
So you got your man tied up on the bridge and you're waiting on Bronx.
Well, he may start working on Bronx and quit working on the bridge, I'm sure.
Tens of people will use that bridge. After you eat a ham, Bronx hamburger, you're going to go out to the lake and get on the trail, you know you are. Uh, I want to, I want to, I'll, this Teresa for chat here tonight, she's not here, it is because she loves us all, but I think she does love us all. Teresa is the new chair of the Water, Waste Water Commission. Mr. David Cole had to step down, he did a great job for us, and I even gave him an Annie's mantle the other night for, but he did a good job, and he, he had a lot of responsibilities with the job, so Teresa's now the chair, and Vice Chair is Wayne Robb, the chief out of Mansfield, who's also a surgeon on the commission too, so. And that is a position open, which I think that I do. Is that they're taking name or they're gathering names and they'll come back with a recommendation or, or a new position. Can I talk about that? Can you talk about that?
I mean, I, I said this, and I said it to Teresa, um, in my humble opinion, that is a big deal. That's a really big deal, water lines, uh, you know, if those folks don't do what they do, those emergency clauses that we so like are going to get inactive when sewer's running out someplace because, you know, those projects take a lot of time to develop and engineer and fund and all of these things, and that's, that's a pretty serious position. So if anybody knows, some people, you know, that are qualified to be on that commission, I think that's something we need to give serious consideration to. You know, not to dog the parks, but, you know, if we don't get something done at the park, that's really not changing our livelihood too much, but if you don't get these water lines and sewer lines and water plants, that's all a big deal. So filling those commission slots, I think Robb said earlier, that's who you put on these boards you're reporting. So if, I've talked to a couple of people that have turned it down on that.
Most of the specs on that, like, live in town or have business or. Where's Waters? They have to live. Or have to be.
Yeah, I've got some forums, if you guys will take them and have somebody that you'd like to submit, that would be great, submit it to Charlotte, because we could use all the names we can get. It's all about on the table.
Okay, they'll be at the table?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, thanks. Good, yes, sir.
I just have one recommendation real quick, uh, everybody's saw three bridges out at the Greenwood Lake that were done by Ralph Henry Baker, which his name is shared by his dad, the councilman, and he, last Thursday night.
Mayor Baker.
Yeah, Mayor Baker, Mayor Baker, last Thursday night, they, the council, the DSA council agreed with him and made, you know, advanced him to the Spring of Eagle Scout, so congratulations to Ralph, he will pick up all of that, so. And a great project for the city of Greenwood.
Mayor down sometime, we'll recommend.
He's off to college, so you're safe for four years.
All right, anything else? Uh, I wanted to make everybody at your seat next month, be here, it's the State of the City address, I know you're. So the betting begins. Anything else? If not, I'll keep entertaining motions who they are.